September 9, 2025, regular board meeting of the Union County Board of Elections meeting to order. We can all stand and say the pledge. Mr. Brunet, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to be just as a man of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation by the God indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you. All right, our first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Has anybody got any additions or deletions to the agendas that we'd like to have? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion we approve the agenda?
We have a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next on the item is approval of the minutes of the August 19, 2025 meeting. We have all had those, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to go through those. Is there any corrections or additions or deletions or any changes to those minutes? Hearing none, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes from August 19, 2025?
Motion we approve the minutes of August 19, 2025.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Brunet, and a second. Just wait a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous. We're onto the public comment, do we have any signups for public comment? Or would any of our public members like to make any comments? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. First item of new business on the agenda is the resolution absentee ballot meetings. Those could be found beginning under the General Assembly, various election changes. It's about, I don't remember, like six or seven pages, something around there. See, a lot of those corrections were to take out Board of Elections and just leave Board, which was fine, and took me a while to bring myself to understand the very first section as far as how that went, but I think I understand it now. Does anybody have any questions on those proposed changes?
The only question I have, yeah, I do have one. How, I noticed that there are several, several sections, it says that the Board will contact the voter, how are we going about contacting voters who have errors and omissions in their absentee ballots?
If they include their phone number or email, we're directed to contact them that way.
Okay. That seems reasonable.
Can I add something?
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, the state law requires that the Board meets to review absentee ballot ballot applications each Tuesday at 5:00, beginning on the 5th Tuesday before the election. And statute also sets county canvass at 11:00 on the 10th day after election, which is on a Friday. Now that this new session law has changed the deadlines for returning the absentee by mail ballots and the deadline in which we have to have provisional ballots reviewed and counted, we're asking that the Board add a couple more meetings, which is on your resolution, and by statute again, we have to, the Board would have to pass a resolution, we would have to publicize this at least 30 days before the election. Since we have to count all of our absentee by mail on Election Day now, anything that we receive on Election Day up till 7:30 on that day, we're asking to add an additional meeting the Monday before the election at 5:00, so we can catch up on anything that came in since the last Tuesday.
And what would that date be?
That is Monday, November 3rd.
Okay.
Okay, and then to add a meeting on Friday, November 7th, at 2:00, because we have to have those provisionals counted by 5:00 p.m. And to meet before canvas at 9:00 on the 14th for any ballots or overseas that have been cured or come in at the last minute that are still eligible to be counted.
For some reason, I have November 3rd at 5:00 p.m. in my calendar already for a meeting. Okay, so that must have come out in some email or something.
It could have, yes, it could have.
Okay. All right.
So we're asking to add those meetings, those three meetings. This is the first request, so we can publish this resolution and hopefully meet those new deadlines that the state's, state now requires.
I make a motion that we pass the resolution as presented.
We have a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Oh, second.
We have a second from Ms. Brunet, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes?
And next.
You're next.
Since we've set the meetings for municipal elections, absentee ballots are not required to be sent out until 30 days before the election. This first absentee meeting that the law requires is further than 30 days, 30 days is October 3rd. So, since we will not have any ballots returned by that date, because they will not have been sent out yet, the state tells us we can cancel this meeting.
November 3rd.
The September 30th, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Said the wrong, yeah. The September 30th meeting, for all the other elections, the ballots go out 45 days before, so this would be valid. There's no exception in the statute for the municipal, we just have to cancel that meeting, because our ballots don't go out until 30 days before. So there'll be nothing for the Board to review on September 30th.
You had the words for that right, you do it.
Well, I make the motion that we cancel the September 30th meeting, as there'll be nothing to review.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's your cancellation, and I thought you had only two.
No, I keep, I have more. I have more. I wanted to point out that there is an absentee meeting set for, I'm sorry, October 7th at 5:00. That's the date of our regular meeting, so you'll have a 4:00 regular Board meeting and then the 5:00 absentee, unless the Board wants to change that up anyway.
Which, which day was that?
That's October 7th. You'll have a regular meeting at 4:00 and then the absentee at 5:00. Just wanted to point that out.
Yes, ma'am.
And that works, you might just have a little, a little break in between.
Okay.
Okay, and the November regular meeting, according to the schedule the Board set, falls on Veterans Day on November 11th. We will be here working, but we give the Board the option to reschedule that meeting. We have the pre-canvas meeting at 9:00 a.m. on the 14th. So I'd like the Board to consider moving the November regular meeting from the 11th to the 14th to follow the pre-canvas meeting.
Is that what I, I'm showing is 11:00 a.m. from something I got from you?
The canvas is at 11, and that's the meeting where the Board certifies the results. All, all Board members have to be here at that 11:00 meeting on November 14th. Every member has to be here. For all these absentee meetings, we need a majority of the Board and at least one member from each party.
And you want to do that at 9:00 a.m. on the 14th instead of on?
November 11th, yes. So just move it from that holiday to when you'll be here for another meeting.
Do I have a motion to move the meeting scheduled, currently scheduled for November 11th at 9:00 a.m. to November 14th at 9:00 a.m.?
How, motion we move that meeting?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
That's it?
Just to, one question, so counting the absentee ballots by county Board of Elections. We have, and here the county Board shall meet at 5:00 p.m. on Election Day in the county Board office, another location, and then it goes on to 5:00 p.m. That, that second paragraph, help me out there. The county Board may begin counting ballots issued under Article 21A of this chapter between hours of 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., and may begin counting all absentee ballots between the hours of 2:00 and 5:00. I'll come there.
Yes, we, we, there's a difference between counting and tabulating the results. Basically. So, we've been allowed, like at these absentee meetings, to open the ballots, open the envelopes and scan the ballots. We cannot tally, basically, just save that information. And on Election Day at 5:00, we can start counting and scanning those ballots. We can't release the results until the polls close at 7:30. Now, we cannot also close the polls for early voting until 7:30 on Election Day. So next year, when we get into this and there's more by mail ballots, we will do a resolution, or we'll ask the Board to do the resolution, to move that time up earlier in the day. Previously for, like, November and the primary, we have those meetings at, at 2:00. The absentee meetings, because there's so many ballots, it takes, you know, it takes a few hours and you don't want the Board working late into the night. But for this municipal, we just left it at 5:00 as the statute states and, and did not move that time back any further.
So we, it was just the, the range where you can set your meeting times?
Yes, just gives you some flexibility to back up your times earlier than, than what is basically set. And we have little cards, I just noticed the only thing is that October 7th meeting, that's the regular meeting, is not on here, so we'll have to adjust that. But this is a little pocket card for you, so you'll know when your meetings are.
All right.
Again, that canvas meeting, every member has to be here for canvas. But the absentee meetings, a majority of the Board and one of each party. If you're, if someone's unable to make those, we can still hold the meeting.
Now, I think I saw that if you weren't available, for some reason something came up, the Party Chair could step in?
Yes, if no, say, no Republican members could attend, then the Party Chair could attend in their, in, as a witness in their place. If not, any, any single.
Would, would that apply to the campus?
Not to campus, no.
Okay.
No.
Damn, is this one we all have to be here?
Yes, ma'am.
So no one gets sick?
Yeah.
We hope not, right? I mean.
All right. Anything else on the resolution and the changes to the statute? The next item of business is the Chief Judge and Party Judge appointments.
If you'll, you see in your packet, there were some vacancies from the last meeting. A few vacancies Republicans have presented, and I'll, I'll do these separate from what the parties presented and what the staff filled in. So for Republican Party Judge Deanna Odom, was presented Democratic Party Judge. The Democratic Party recommended Andrew Parrish for precinct 25, Joanne Whitley for 36, and Magdalene Massey for 43. And then, that's the only party recommendations if I could get a Board, the Board to approve those appointments.
So it's just Ms. Odom, Mr. Parrish, Ms. Whitley, and Ms. Massey? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, and what is the red color for Ms. Fielding? Was she already approved in the last?
Those, the parties, the party did not make a recommendation, so our staff filled in those spots, I'll just have you approve those separately.
Can I have a motion, do I have to do each party individually? A motion to approve the party recommendation for Republican Party Judge Deanna Odom, the Democrat recommendation for the Democrat Party Judge of Mr. Parrish, or Ms. Whitley, and Ms. Massey?
Thank you, motion we approve the Party recommended judges.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Party recommended judges, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, got a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes, we have to sleep. So now we have a recommendation from staff to try to fill in the vacancies. And we have, for the Republican Party, Michael DeNova, I'm probably butchering it, but, Michael DeNova, Chief Judge Benny Meadows, Chief Judge Jeff Rogers. For the Democrat Party Judges, we have Meg Fielding, Thomas Evans, Anthony Curry, and that's it for the Democrats.
I think we missed Ganel more than on the bottom of the Chief Judge.
Oh, thank you, and we missed Chief Judge Ganel Martin. So recap, Chief Judge recommendations by staff were Benny Meadows, Jeff Rogers, and Ganel Martin. Staff recommendations for Republican Party Judges are Michael DeNevwa III, and the Democrat, a recommendation by staff for the Democrat Party Judges are Meg Fielding, Thomas Evans, Anthony Curry, and that's it. So, is there a motion to approve the staff recommendations for those judges?
I motion we approve the staff recommendations for those judges.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, any discussion, actually, may I just ask a question? How did staff come up with those names?
They're individuals that have worked in the past, so for example, Benny Meadows has been at that precinct and experienced for many years, and was willing to work. So, and we tried to get somebody in that precinct, but that's not available.
Is there, I guess, what are the, are they Republican?
She is a Democrat.
She's a Democrat? Benny Meadows. How about Jeff Rogers?
He is a Democrat.
And Ganel Martin?
Democrat as well.
Well, we have a motion on the table that was seconded, is there any further discussion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion pending, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
They are hard positions to fill, having been a poll worker for a long time. It's, it's, it's a tough job.
All right, logic and accuracy testing.
That's me. So our logic and accuracy testing of our equipment for this upcoming election is well underway, in fact, it's always completed. And just a reminder, as to what that is, that's where all the equipment, the scans, the prints, the ADA machines, the high-speed scanners, all this equipment is tested for the actual programming for the election. What we do is we program the equipment, we'll run what's called a test deck, through the scans, through the tabulators, that test deck has a set of results that we're supposed to come out to. And once we print the tapes, those tapes are checked by somebody in the office, actually, they were checked by two people this time, for accuracy. So that, and I'm happy to report that all come out the way it should, it always does, so that's never an issue. And then the equipment's also just checked to make sure that it functions correctly, that it's, it's gonna work on Election Day, you know, it's ready to go when it needs to. So, there's also hash testing that was done prior to the actual logic and accuracy. What the hash testing is, is it's a kind of like a fingerprint of the program, of the source programming of the equipment that's pulled off of the equipment, and then that is compared to a file that we get from the EAC, so make sure that all of that matches perfectly, which means that nobody is tampered with the machines at all. So that's another part of where it'll end. And everything's going smoothly this time, there's a lot less equipment, because we've got a lot of precincts that are not open, so that's, that helps out. But if you have any questions, I'll pack them.
How many, how many machines roughly do you have to do?
Let's see, we have 35, 36 precincts open this time? 35, 35 scans for precincts. So that means you have 35 scanners, 35 prints, which are sent out to Election Day precincts to print provisional ballots, 35 ADA machines. Then we have six prints that are upstairs for early voting, that print the actual ballots when people show up, and there's two scans up there that tabulate, and then an ADA machine. And then we do spares of all of that, in case something were happening. So, it's a good bit of equipment, but not, not too much, so. Next year will be, every single piece of equipment will be utilized pretty much with a small number of spares, so.
Does, does every county go through that same process?
They do, or they're supposed to. I'm not sure what, how other counties do it, but we do it the way it's, it's supposed to be done, you know, it's a very standardized process, it's bipartisan. There's, there's multiple people involved, so it's, it's all above board. And like I said, the tapes have been checked by bipartisan teams as well, for accuracy. And the, the hash testing part that I was talking about, where the files pulled off of the machine and compared, that's actually not even a state requirement yet, we're, we're kind of one of the few counties that does that. That's just an extra step that we take to ensure that everything's okay and people have confidence in it.
Thank you.
Basically, like, once they're doing dummy votes and then making sure that the tallies actually match what the scanner's picked up?
Correct, there's, there's a, there's a whole set we, of pre-printed ballots, and they're pre-marked. And so we have people that are, again, bipartisan, will run the ballots through the machine, will print the tape off, will take those tapes, have those checked, will clear out the votes on the machine, print a zero tape that shows there's no votes on the machine, and then they're sealed up and they're ready to go for Election Day, so.
You reassured me once upon a time, when I was a poll worker, that I was asking about security of the machines and were they vulnerable and?
And, and our, our equipment's, I think, some of the most secure stuff that is out there, it's, it's all, it's all offline, most of all, there's, there's none of them's connected to the internet or any network. So, that's the big thing. Our ballots have individual serial numbers on them, so they cannot be, someone could not get ahold of one ballot and take it to a copier and run a bunch of copies of it and try to stuff the machine, it'll take it one time, it won't take it anymore, it'll know that it's taken that ballot. Our papers watermarks, it's a very specific paper, that's, it would be impossible almost to duplicate. So there's, there's a lot of steps involved.
My observation as a poll worker for many years was that the most likely place for any sort of error was human error on the part of exhausted poll workers. I mean, that was my, you know, maybe giving somebody the, the wrong ballot because they looked up the wrong name, or something along those lines versus anything.
But, I mean, you know, and human errors do happen, we try to minimize that as much as we can though. I mean, that's important, one of the reasons we have the print system for early voting, because that helps minimize error too. The, the ballot style is actually on the ATV, so when the ATV prints out, there's barcode. The poll worker takes a scanner from the print, scans that barcode, it pulls up the correct ballot, all they have to do is hit print. So that ensures that the voter does not get an incorrect ballot, because during a partisan primary, like next year, we could have 250 ballot styles. Now this year, we only have 65, so it's a lot, you know, a lot smaller, but we try to take out as much opportunity for human errors as we can.
I felt very good about the security, even though I was a skeptic, okay? When I was out there actually in the precinct, I felt very good about the security and the, and the procedure.
Yeah, there's, and there's a lot, you know, a lot of people don't even know that we use paper ballots in here, in Union County exclusively paper ballots, everybody gets paper ballot. If you, early voters, paper ballot, if you, sort of Election Days, paper ballot, absentee by mail is paper ballot. You know, so everybody's getting a paper ballot, we don't have any touchscreen, direct record electronic devices or anything like that, we're strictly paper now. So, it's a, that's a big upgrade, so, and HARP intercivic star equipment. It's the very line, and we've been pretty happy with it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, do we need to take a, it's under new business, or are we doing any kind of voting for approval of the process, or?
It's still, so it's still in progress, because we have not finished the Oh, it's still, so it's still in progress, because we have not finished the ADA devices, the accessible devices that go out. So there's really a partial list of what's gonna be used, it's not approved, we can bring it to the next meeting and approve it then, if you would like to air that into the record. And has, we have all the serial numbers, all the seals, everything is, is tracked on that, so we can do that next meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, I'd like to table that for the next meeting, then add that to the record if we could at the next meeting. Thank you. Alright, we're on to the directors' reports, or staff reports, Director Hallway.
Yes, I just want to give the board a few updates. The State Board reviewed the October and November non-unanimous early voting plans at their August twenty-seventh meeting. They approved the majority plan for Union County, which did not approve the Sunday voting. You have a flyer in your booklet, and I think, and they have emailed that to you as well, that shows the dates and times and location of early voting, so it will be open Monday through Fridays, eight to six, and the last Saturday, eight to three. And we do have that, we'll be sharing that information on social media and to the towns, candidates, and on our website. Also, the notice of election is included in your packet. Statute requires that notice to be posted at the courthouse and published in the newspaper at least once weekly during the twenty-day period before the voter registration deadline, which is October tenth. That just basically states the days, times of the election, what will be on the ballot, and early voting, and how to vote by mail. Sample ballots are available now, so a voter can search through our website or the state website, enter their information, and it pops up their voter history, what precinct they vote in, if they're eligible to vote in this election. And if they do have a sample ballot, it will be linked and they can click and view that sample ballot on the website. Observers for the election this year, in January of twenty-four, there was a new law that parties can appoint observers if the party has a candidate on the ballot. So since these are nonpartisan races, there will not be any observers in the nonpartisan elections this year. Yes. Interesting, yes. So no observers for our municipal elections. Yep. It says, twenty-two-three, one forty, section seventy, general statute, one sixty-three, forty-five, one D, one, three, three. It's like if you have, have a candidate on the ballot, or an affiliated, an affiliated candidate, they can also appoint an observer, but for nonpartisan. The state's interpreting that to mean, nonpartisan cannot, the parties can't have observers. I'll give you an update if that guidance changes. And I gave you copies in the booklet of the mailings that were sent out from the Voter Participation Center and the Center for Voter Information. They frequently will mail registration applications to different households. At one time, they populated the name and the address of the voter, it caused a lot of confusion, the legislature passed a law that they're not allowed to pre-populate those forms any longer. However, the ones that we've seen did have their address printed on it, the ones that have returned, even some of our staff have received those in the mail. But, so there were, what, over three thousand, about thirty-five hundred mailed out in Union County. So far, Donna's said she's only received about fifty back, where most of those already registered.
Yes.
Yeah, and a, and a lot of time, they'll return it, it looks, if you see, it looks official. So a lot of people think it comes from our office or from the state, so when they call.
Why does it come from?
These two groups, these two, it's like a voter advocacy group.
Okay.
And they try, they try to reach people, or in their letter, the information they sent to the state, they try to reach people that are not registered, or people that have moved and may not have updated their registration. I don't really know how they get their mailing, their mailing list, but this is not the first time we've received, received those.
Doesn't seem too reliable if they're mailing it to people on staff.
And then they, some elections, they have sent out the absentee ballot request forms too, so, but that was not included in this mailing. And our registration repair project, that's the settlement with the state with the voters that did not have the last four of their social or driver's license number on their record. That mailing went out from the state, we've had a few people come in to update that record, and some have gone online to the DMV to update their record. Now, our total is a thousand and forty-three. We're working very hard to get that number down, because any of those people that go to vote will be asked to vote a provisional ballot. And that will be in that number of provisionals that we have to process in three days now, instead of the ten. So, we're working hard to get that number down. We've gone back through our records to try to find if there was an, an older document, like an older registration form that had their information on it that was not included, or maybe it was entered incorrectly. So we have taken off between the voters that have responded and that information that we found, around five hundred so far.
And do you have any way of knowing if these people have moved?
We, I ran, we ran a list last week. I did the NCOA from twenty-twenty to the end of last year, in an Excel sheet, and then we compared it to this list, and we found about seventy, I think it was around seventy voters that had been on NCOA that we know have moved. I have not yet gone in to see if they moved into, moved within the county, or moved out of state, or within the state. But, that's next, to try to contact those, once I see where they moved to, and have them either update their registration, or if they moved out of the county to cancel their registration.
My sister ended up on that year list for some, I mean, she's lived and voted in Union County for thirty years. We, I mean, she never quite, I assume she got it fixed, but I'm just saying, that's somebody who's been an active voter for thirty years and still ended up on it.
And there were times when it was not, the information was not required on the registration application. So that's part of the problem, there was a certain time when SEEMS, the state database, knocked that information out of that voter's record, and that's some that we've been able to go back and research and find it in there from years ago, and, and add it, and process it again, and it validates. So there's, I mean, there's, and then, and even people that were required to show ID, it's in our record that they presented, like a driver's license or HABA ID when they voted, it just doesn't have those numbers. So if the numbers were not added, and when you go to vote on Election Day, the system only lets you check what type of ID, it doesn't, it hasn't given us access to enter that information or ask us to enter that information, so now we're, all the counties are trying to catch it.
And then, so then it just becomes provisional bound, if you can't enter the information, try to verify.
Now, with all of these, and like I said, it's over a thousand for us, if they come to vote, they're automatically directed to vote provisionally. We can't process them as a, even though they voted before, maybe have showed ID before, we can't give them a regular ballot, it has to vote. They have to vote provisionally.
Can I interrupt and ask one more question? There, and I saw it written in here somewhere, and certainly last election. There was a notice for voters who did not have photo ID as they came in. What, how, what are their options? Do they have to go provisional, or can they still do that affidavit that allows them to vote the day of, and?
If, if a voter presents and does not have photo ID, they have to vote provisionally. When they get to the provisional station, and all those ballots come back for the board to review.
I know, I, I remember that.
They all come back for the board to review. So they can either, say, give them, they can come back to our office and bring their ID. Now, they've shortened that deadline, the deadline now is noon, three days after the election, which is that Friday. They can fill out the photo ID exception form, which is the reason why they don't have an ID with them. The board reviews and approves those, or denies those as well. So those are their option, but if you do not have an ID, you are required to vote a provisional ballot.
Are they, are voters gonna be made aware of that? I was a little bit surprised, it didn't, it didn't seem like that information was being readily shared at the last election. And I would understand why not, because, you know, when I was a, when I was working at the polls, we maybe had twenty provisional ballots, thirty provisional ballots, tops, even on, on Election Day in a general. And I imagine now we are probably looking at a whole, whole, whole lot more.
We usually have, for a primary or general election, we have around a thousand provisionals. In the past?
Totally.
Yes, for all, for all. In the past, Phillip and I have processed those provisionals, because they get a little complicated sometimes, and we've, you know, we always present those to the board too, and we like to be certain of what we're presenting. But with this change and this shortened deadline, we're still trying to recreate our process for, for those. And you know, you, you're gonna have three different IDs now, you're gonna have, if I don't just have an ID when I present to vote, I'm a regular voter, but I forgot my ID, you're gonna have somebody that's registered that has to show a HABA ID the first time they vote, there'll be those, those are people that furnished their social security number or driver's license, but it didn't validate. So the first time they go to vote, they'll have to show ID, that's gonna be another that presents. And then we'll have these on the registration repair project, so it's, it's gonna be a little
Okay.
intense, a little confusing for the, the people that come in and work elections one day or two days out of the year. But, see on our flyer how we have photo ID required? And we have certain signs from the state too, that we have to post at the entrance to the polling place and inside the polling place about ID. About ID, yes.
The exception to ID, okay.
Yes, and we'll, we'll let them know that too, that they can fill out, out that form.
This is gonna be tough, isn't it?
As well. It's always exciting.
Elections are exciting. On, on the election repair project, you know, I went and looked through it, and I saw probably six or seven people in my neighborhood. So I went and tried to contact them, I went to their doors, and, you know, if they didn't answer, I, you know, left a message and posted it in my neighborhood Facebook page, so people may want to try that, you know, they may head off some of the.
Yeah, we've tried, we've tried to share, and we appreciate anyone sharing a link to that list. We've even had poll workers on, we had poll workers on the list, so. But they've been, they've updated, so, but we're still trying to reach those that are remaining.
And that's, it's on the website, your Facebook?
It is, mhm. You can search by, you can search the entire list, you can search by county, or you can search by name.
Well, we commend you for your efforts.
We're trying.
That's obvious.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Thank you very much, voter registration, Ms. Meadows.
Yes, I will be giving the voter registration report for the month of August. We'll start with the NVR A report in your packet. Active voters for August, end of August, the end of August, was one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four registrations. Twenty-one thousand, one hundred, one hundred and seventy-three were enacted. Sorry, it's, the total is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty-seven, I read the wrong line. Active voters, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four. Inactive, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three registrations. Reporting period, six hundred and ninety-seven registrations were approved. Three hundred and thirty-eight registrations were removed. Out of those, fifty-five registrations were enacted. New registrations, we processed eight hundred and eighty for the month of August. Most of those reg, all of our registrations have been coming from the DMV or online. Duplicate registrations, we had processed six hundred and thirty-six registrations. Changes of information, we processed five hundred and fifty-five registrations. We'll go to the verification section. Two thousand one hundred and fifty-six first and second verifications mailings were sent. Nine hundred and two first verifications were returned undeliverable. Twenty-four re, oh, sorry, twenty-four verification were returned by the vote. We'll go to confirmations. Seventeen confirmations were returned by the vote. Nine hundred and two confirmations were sent. Eight hundred confirmations were returned undeliverable. Three confirmations were not returned at all. The next part of that report is by party. It shows, it breaks up the parties, how many voters are in each party, race, ethnicity, gender. Next report is the party change cross-tab report. On the left, the Democrats, one Democrat changed to Green Party, eleven Democrats changed to Republican, thirty-eight Democrats changed to unaffiliated, a total of fifty Democrats changed in their party. And that's the way this report reads, I won't read each one, but that's the way it reads. Next, is your statistical report. And as for your observation, we've gained five hundred and forty-eight registrations since the last meeting.
Okay, I'll wait until you guys draw all this, and then I'll ask my question, because it's back on the other page.
Okay. The next report is the NCOA mail-in. And that says, August thirty-first, we've received ten NCOA mail-ins without a forward address. Thirty-three we received back that moved within the state. Seventy-five moved from the state. Eighty-nine moved within our county, and one was reported deceased by a near relative. And the next is not in your packet, but it is the voter registration deadline, which Kristen stated before, is August the tenth at five o'clock P.M. That's here in the office. That's here in the office and by mail. Must be postmarked.
August 10th, 5:00 PM.
You mean October. October.
Yeah, obviously. Apologize.
October 10th at 5:00 PM. If the voters did not, if they missed the registration deadline, they can register and vote at early voting event time.
It's, my one question I had was, okay, under the, the verification on the MBRAs report, this is just a curiosity question. Under the verifications and confirmations, is that the number sent just this month and return? Like what I'm trying to say, were those the confirmation, the returns from the confirmations that were sent out? Or could they be overlapped from prior months? Does that make any sense?
Could be, yes ma'am, it could be.
Okay, so, so we're, we're not limited it to just the month? Okay, that, all right, I appreciate that. I can look at my old agenda because we have this in there too. Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Here it goes. Ms. Reyes.
Ms. Reyes is in a training class. So you have the budget reports, nothing exciting on you. We're under budget in administration so far at 11.2%. And we're less than 1% spent in elections budget, but those costs will start posting in the next couple of months. Question about any items on the budget?
Really early, my pleasure. Got a little bit wasted ago, but we'll get eaten up soon. Any questions on the financial reports? Here it goes. Ms. Jordan, voter outreach.
Okay, so for voter outreach for the month of September, we have some little events. Today we're hosting the campaign finance training for the State Board of Elections. We worked with them to volunteer and they accepted our offer. So we did the training today. There's about 17 candidates or treasurers up there for that training. For this week, we are going to Unionville Heritage Festival. So we're going to be there on Saturday from 10 to 4. And then on September 16th, we're going to be partnering with the Union County Libraries. And it's National Voter Registration Day. So we'll be trying to help people register to vote. They're having a campaign as well. So we'll be at all four locations. And then on September 25th, the town at Indian Trail has asked us to speak at the Facebook Live presentation. So our deputy director, Phillip, will be presenting on that Facebook Live. And then on September 27th, the Convention of States has asked us to speak at their board meeting about working Election Day. So we'll be giving a little presentation on that day. And then ending the month, we start our training for Election Day. So September 29th through October 4th, we'll be having trainings at the Old Armory. And then October 9th through the 11th, we'll have classes here at the Board Election Office.
I know you lost a lot of voter outreach programs during all that rain.
Yes. We lost several, yes. So we're trying to work those back in.
Oh, okay. That's what I was going to ask you to try to recover some of those.
Yes, we actually have one next month in October for Wax Off for their national night out. So we were able to reschedule with them for October 7th.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions, Ms. Jordan? We're at the point of general discussion. They can discuss that great Buffalo Bills victory on Monday if anybody wants to discuss that.
I did watch that game. I stayed up to watch that. That was, that was something.
That was something. Great discussion.
Yeah.
And I was able to smile all day yesterday. Any, anything for the good of the order?
Not for me.
All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move, second.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Kristen, I want to verify these dates. I have marks on the back of my calendar.